All right, good morning, everyone. Let's call to order our meeting for December thirtieth, our last one of 2020.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
President.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, now our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. All right, and our invocation today will be led by Pastor Kim Wilcox of the North Baptist Church in Ottawa. Go ahead, Pastor.
All right, will you join me in prayer? Lord, we thank you again for each one of these commissioners, the ones that you have led to lead us during this time. And, Lord, this has been, as we close out this year, this has been quite a different year for each one of them, I'm sure, as well. And, Lord, I pray that you would just continue to give them clear minds for the directions that you need to have them to go and the decisions they need to make. And, Lord, I continue to ask for your protection over them for their health and just their well-being as well. Lord, it's not an easy task to govern over people because each one has their own ways that they would like to see things done. And, Lord, we know that, Rachel, the commissioners, they do what needs to be done for the best of the whole. And, Lord, I just pray that you would continue to strengthen them, allow them to do what you have called them to do, and to stand firm in their decisions. And, Lord, just bless the things that they do, encourage them to continue to make the decisions that would benefit the whole. And so, Lord, as they close out this year, we just ask for guidance and direction as they look forward into 2021. Lord, we just pray that you would give them insight, give them wisdom, give them strength, and give them ability to complete the tasks that you have. Lord, again, we are just thankful for your presence with us, not only today, but in the days to come, and for each one of these men and women as well. And, Lord, we just thank you for all this, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you, sir. Down to correspondence and organizational business. Derek, do we have anything we need to throw on there before we move past it?
No, sir.
All right. Janet, how about public comment? Anyone signed up today?
No, sir.
All right. The agenda would include minutes from our December twenty-third meeting, claim vouchers in the amount of $516,410.8 payroll in the amount of $1,253,636.49, and there are two emergency vehicle permits today. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it. Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, items of business. The first will be with David Lee in the Public Works Department. It's to consider holding a public hearing in the future to consider vacating the road at that time. Go ahead, David.
Good morning, commissioners. I was approached by some landowners up on Stafford Terrace between Kentucky and Louisiana. This is a minimum maintenance road that, as we discuss, on most of our minimum maintenance roads, we have issues with people during times of wet weather going down there and mudding and really tearing up the road for the farmers who need to access the land. And so, these landowners would like us to vacate the right-of-way. They have all signed, all the landowners, and there's several of them on this stretch of road. Each one of them have signed a petition asking us to vacate that right-of-way. And in order to do so, we need to hold a public hearing, much like we're going to do on the second agenda item here. But we need to start the process, and so I'm asking for your approval to hold a public hearing on January thirteenth to consider vacating the 2,100 to 2,300 block of Stafford Terrace from the east right-of-way of Kentucky Road to the west right-of-way of Louisiana. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Dunn, I'm very familiar with this stretch of road. I've had a lot of complaints about it in my district. I think it definitely needs to be vacated, and I'll make a motion to have a public hearing at that time.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, second.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our second item of business is to consider holding a public hearing today on a portion of road that we previously discussed. I'll let you recap, David, before we look to take a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. This road, this 1,500 to 1,700 block of Tennessee Road, which is between John Brown and Hamilton, much like the item that we just discussed, this is a minimum maintenance road that gets a lot of traffic on it that doesn't really belong there, especially during times of wet weather. So the landowners came together and they would like us, would like the county to vacate this right-of-way so that they can put gates up and limit the traffic to just those particular landowners. And so, what we need to do today is to open a public hearing to allow anyone that wishes to talk about this. Once that is completed and we close a public hearing, we would like to have a resolution that is in your packet. We'll need to get that approved and signed so that we can get that published.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to hold a public hearing to consider vacating Tennessee Road from the north right-of-way John Brown Road to the south right-of-way of Hamilton Road?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed to opening it? All right. Janet, do we have anybody on the line or express any interest?
I don't. I don't have anyone else on the line, other than the commissioners and staff and our minister.
All right, Dave, is there any correspondence you need to tell us about, or?
No, sir, I have not. It's been published in the paper and sort of guide mail has been sent to all the adjacent landowners who all happened to sign the petition, and I have not received any calls or had anyone express any concerns about this particular stretch.
All right. Any commissioners need to? I guess we go down the line, anything you've heard from constituents or anything you have to say? Ian?
No, I haven't heard from anybody. I just wondered, so then, after we, if we just let this go back, then they put the gates up. If somebody trespasses, that's up to them to figure that out at that point?
That is correct. Commissioner Dickinson, what will happen is the county is essentially vacating our rights to that right-of-way through there. And so, our ability to access that goes away, and it becomes part of the, while it already is the adjacent landowner's land already, we, as the county, have no additional rights to that land, and the public's right to access that land goes away as well. So at that point, it's just like any other property that somebody owns. They can fence it off, they can gate it, however they would like to handle that between themselves is totally up to them. And so, the county is not responsible for maintaining that right-of-way any longer, which is a benefit to the county at large, for sure.
This, Commissioner Stottlemyre, I do know the road. Very few homes in that area, very limited use. Landowners probably the only people that, unless somebody just wants a joyride and go through there, and then they have to pick a really dry time to do it. So I understand their point in what they're doing.
All righty. Sorry, I called on Ian thinking it was in her district, but that's probably in your district there, Don. I should have went with you first.
I'll make.
Go ahead, unless anybody else needs to chime in. All right. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead, Don. We probably need to, we need to close our public hearing before we.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All right, all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So go ahead, Don, if you'd like to make a motion to vacate.
To vacate the road between 1,500 and 1,700 Tennessee Road.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. I think I'm fighting the delay on the phone line a little more today than when I'm in the chamber. So I apologize for the stutter stepping on you there, Don. Our third item of business, consider approving a funding application to KDOT, the local road safety plan. David?
All right, commissioners, for this particular item, I'm asking for approval to complete an application for funding for the KDOT Local Road Safety Plan, or as they call it, the LRSP. This is a joint venture between the Federal Highway Administration and all state DOTs to identify and analyze safety issues, along with recommending solutions for local road systems in Kansas and nationwide. The cost for this LRSP is, for this plan, is $50,000, with the county being responsible for 10% or $5,000. KDOT has really been pushing to get all of the counties in Kansas to participate in this program, and we're one of only 33 counties that have not signed up for this just yet. Once we submit the application, we will be selected. This is not a competitive program. Everybody that applies is eventually selected. So we'll either be in the federal fiscal year 2021, which is already underway, or the 2022 federal fiscal year. So once we submit the application and are approved, KDOT will assign a consultant to work with us to complete the plan. That consultant will gather and analyze crash data for all of our hard-service roads. There's an emphasis on our major collectors, but they will include all of our other roads, hard-service roads as well. They will conduct meetings with local stakeholders, which is the Road and Bridge Department, but they will also include the Sheriff's Office, emergency services, and others that are, well, they're stakeholders in the condition of our roads. And so, they will go through this to identify any road safety issues. Once this plan has been completed, we will receive a written report that details all of our crash data and will include the top 10 safety projects with at least three levels of potential solutions. These solutions will include low-cost countermeasures, such as maybe rumble strips or striping, those sorts of things, up to comprehensive actions that would be eligible for another KDOT funding program called the High Risk Rural Roads, or HRRR, where there is, I think this last year, there was like $3.5 million available through that program for these projects. Eligibility for this, for the HRRR program is contingent on completing the LRSP, the Local Road Safety Plan. So, and in reading the material on the High Risk Rural Roads program, I kind of suspect that widening Old 50 may qualify for funding through that program. So hopefully, this local road safety plan that we're going to be doing will validate that thought. I did visit with the Miami County Public Works Director about this program. He provided me with a copy of their crash data, which is eight pages long and quite comprehensive. Although they are still kind of going through the process, they've got a few more meetings yet to go with all the stakeholders before the consultant gets into completing the final report and recommendations. They have been happy with the process and do plan to use the projects listed in the plan to apply for funds through the High Risk Rural Roads project, or funding mechanism. So, and personally, I would anticipate incorporating the projects identified through this program into any capital improvement project list that we create in the next year. So I think it's a good project. It's a relatively low-cost opportunity for us that may lead to, well, it's certainly going to lead to identifying maybe some road issues that we weren't aware of or had not fully considered. And then it provides an avenue for us to be eligible for additional funding through KDOT for larger projects. So I think it's a good deal, and I would certainly recommend the commission moving forward with this application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
This is Commissioner Howard. I do have a question. You know how long this program has been there?
It started in 2018.
2018, okay, because I was just curious, because you said we're one of 33 counties, and I'd never heard about this program before, and I was just wondering why we had not talked about this before.
You know, I can't speak to, prior to when I was here, but certainly, this has been on my radar for about the last year and a half, but with all of the issues with the flooding and those sorts of things, it's been a little lower on my priority list. But certainly, it's important for us going forward and something that we need to do.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. You can obviously tell it's a government program with all those letters. But also, I do think that Old Highway 50 is definitely an issue. We were, actually, I don't often drive on Old Highway 50 past Williamsburg, but I was on that road on Monday, and the road itself is fine, but those shoulders or the edge of the road, that is, yeah, in very seriously bad condition. So anything we can do to help that would be awesome.
Yes.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve submitting the funding application for the KDOT Local Road Safety Plan?
Mr. Dunn, I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it. Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you, David?
Thank you.
All right, our fourth item is take a look at our annual law enforcement services contract with the city of Pomona. Sheriff Richards, are you on?
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can, go ahead.
As you mentioned, this is an annual contract, so obviously, we do it every year. I apologize for getting this to the board late, and this has been approved by the city of Pomona already. Just so that you're aware, the amount on this for 2021 is $65,512. That is an increase of 3% or an increase of $1,908. That increase was determined by HR provided what they believed our increase in benefits would be, and we knew where our salary increases would be. And so, we kind of looked at those numbers, and whatever we came up to was, we needed to increase it 3%. And so, as I said, city of Pomona has approved this, and I'm just requesting that the board commissioners approve this this morning as well.
All right. Everybody have any questions before we look to make a motion? Doesn't sound like it. A motion to approve this contract would be, I move to approve the 2021 contract for law enforcement services with the city of Pomona in the amount of $65,512.
This, Commissioner Dunn, I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And our final item of business is to consider for approval year-end transfers. Janet?
Yes, commissioners, this is our annual budget transfers that you guys see annually at the end of the year. Some of these items are done throughout the year, but we just kind of do a wrap-up of it, like our last few items on there with the Fair Premium, Fair Building, and Historical Society. We take care of those throughout the year, but we just do this as a cleanup. These other items, all the larger items at the top, we passed this resolution, and then when we're doing our final review of the books, which will come sometime the first week of January, we will transfer these amounts, and it will be up to these amounts. I do have a couple that I'm watching. District Court has requested that we move some funds from their jury trial line over to some reserve funds that we have, because, as you know, they could not have jury trials this year, and that would put a lot of jury trials on deck for them next year that we wouldn't have funding available for. So they do have some excess funding because they didn't have the jury trials this year. They're not sure exactly how much they're going to have, but they're estimating around $50,000. So we're going to put that in reserve for them, up to that amount in reserve for them. So when they have these jury trials next year, we're not hit with a cost that we didn't plan for. So we're planning in advance for that. All these other ones are regularly budgeted in our annual budget, and they're towards the front of our budget on a transfer page, so these are all itemized in there. We discuss these when we do the budget. So we have a substantial amount going to capital improvement and our general fund equipment reserve, so to plan for those large expenditures that we know that we have coming up. We've talked about some of them, like our software system for the county and various road projects and other things like that that you guys feel are important. So I will definitely answer any questions about this that you guys have. Like I said, most of these are just our regular amounts that are in our budget annually.
Janet, this is Don.
Yes.
Did we transfer about that same amount for the Fair Premiums and Fair Buildings last year?
We have, from year to year, changed that around. I would have to go back and look at that amount. We have, in the past years, given them a very similar amount. Just where it comes from has been a little bit different. We do have the ability to levy taxes to pay for Fair Building and Fair Premium, but from year to year, you guys have discussed it at your budget meetings and sometimes decided that it was more equitable to give it from the tourism fund. And as you can see on the resolution, the Fair Building, Fair Premium, and Historical Society, those amounts are coming from tourism. As you know, with Historical Society, we give them an allocation of $71,000 a year, so only $2,000 of that is coming from tourism funds. So the majority of that is coming from levied taxes. Now, Fair Building and Fair Premium, this year, the majority of their allocation came from the tourism because you guys believed, when you did the budget, that that is an activity that's drawing people into our county to collect more sales tax revenue and fill up our hotels for stays with things like the demolition derby and the rodeo and the carnival and judges that we have come in for the fair and stuff. So you guys felt like that was fair to use those funds for this. So that's up to you guys when you prepare your annual budget. That's how this budget for 2020 was prepared.
I guess the only, and I have no problem, I just, I figured we didn't even use those funds last year.
They still have expenses that they have to pay to upkeep their buildings, which is what most of this goes towards, is to pay for the upkeep and maintenance on their buildings and the utilities out there at those facilities. They did not have as much this year with the pandemic, because the fair wasn't as large, but they still did have quite a few expenses, and I know they had some different expenses because of the pandemic to try to get things ready so they could host any events there. So that might be, that might be a conversation that you want to have with the fair board.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. They still did have their 4-H part of the fair, so they still had their cow show and all the animals and all that, too. Also, I did have a quick question. Do you have any idea how the tourist funds compared, came in this year comparatively?
I have not looked at those. We have not received the allocation yet from the fourth quarter, which is the quarter that we always see the largest amount come in because of the car show and all of those activities that are happening in September. So to my knowledge, we have not received that yet, so I haven't really put pen to paper on that to see what, how much lower they are. I mean, we expect them to be lower just because less people are staying in the hotels when we don't have these activities. So I have not looked at that, but when we get that, I will let you guys know.
And Ian, this is Derek. I think conventional wisdom would indicate that our numbers will be lower, but I don't know that that is actually going to be the case because of the big gas pipeline that is being built through Franklin County. That has actually ensured that our hotels, my understanding is that they have stayed incredibly full throughout the year because of that. So, I mean, the numbers will prove it one way or another, but I actually am inclined to believe that we're not going to see much of a dip just due to that pipeline. But we'll get you an update as soon as we have those numbers.
And I would further add to that, Ian. We did see a significant sales tax increase early on in this pandemic because people were staying home and shopping either online or locally at our Walmart and our Price Chopper. Some of those, a lot of those people would normally shop out of town in Gardner or Lawrence or whatever, but were unable to do that because of the pandemic. So we did see a significant increase in our sales tax number. So sometimes we, you know, go down in one area but go up in another. So I think that that's a benefit.
Also, we came online with a truck stop in Wellsville, and I'm sure they're generating a lot.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, the year-end transfers are listed in a resolution, and an affirmative action would be to move to adopt the resolution to approve the year-end transfers. Anyone care to make that motion?
Commissioner Dickinson.
Got you, Ian.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it. Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Sheriff Waymeyer?
Yes, you guys just did that to make me feel better. So I appreciate that. Down to staff reports, Derek.
All right, I want to start with just a very brief financial overview in light of the fact that you just approved year end transfers. As all of you know very well, we have two big reserve funds, our capital improvement fund and then our equipment reserve fund. Janet and I started doing this, our, our first budget was in 2017. So we inherited certain balances from 2016. And this is one of my favorite discussions to have because I think it highlights the great work that's being done by the department heads and the county and frankly, all county staff. When we started doing this, our equipment reserve balance was roughly $750,000. At the, after this transfer, it's going to be about 1.5 million. So, so in that time, we have increased, I mean, we've doubled the equipment reserve balance. We've done that obviously while, I don't have to tell the five of you how many projects that this county has gotten done since 2017 moving forward. I think our capital improvement fund, the increase is even more flattering. When we started doing this, our balance was about $880,000. And after today's transfers, it's going to be over 2.4 million. And so we've seen, we've almost tripled it. I mean, the exact increase is about 177%. Next year, between those two funds, we're looking to add about another 1.1 million to those. And so this organization is doing incredibly well at setting money back. We have seen benefits to our bond rating because of that. And we talk about debt all the time. You know, you want to get out of debt, the first thing you got to do is stop incurring debt. And I think about all of the projects we've done and we're paying straight cash for those. I mean, we, we are going to do a countywide software upgrade as Janet mentioned. Because of COVID, it's, it's not likely to happen in 21. I think we'll start planning in 21, but the purchase will probably become in, probably come in 22. Provided the board is, is okay with it, we intend to pay cash for that. And you think about, you put us back where we were in 2016. The thought of paying cash for a million dollar plus expense, I mean, it would have been impossible. And so incredibly pleased with, with where we're at there. And I hope the five of you are because what this has done is it's, it's given you all, like you, you are going to be able to make some really impactful decisions over the next few years. And I, you know, I, I hope you appreciate that. I think that's what, hopefully why you agreed to do what you're doing and, and will continue to, to make these transfers. And, and you all will get to, I mean, you'll have decisions to make in terms of where you want to put the mill levy. Do you want to lower taxes a little bit? Do you want to keep them where they're at, but put more money into special projects? You know, we've heard a lot about road related projects, old 50. I mean, I think you all will have the ability to do some of that. And, and us being able to set this money aside has a, is a large reason why. And so can't say enough about the work that, that county staff have done because so much of these increases come from our department heads taking a long, critical look at their individual budgets and deciding what they can and can't do without. And certainly sacrifices have been made. So very proud of them for that. Obviously, the county continues its COVID response. We're still having ample discussions about vaccines. You know, we know enough now, this is going to be a frustrating process. This vaccine distribution is, it is not well organized. And, and we can put it on the state, but I, I don't think it's a state of Kansas problem. I think it's a United States of America problem. I think it is completely, it's in disarray at the federal level. But this country's entire COVID response has been in disarray from the beginning. And so we are doing the best that we can with that. But it is frustrating because we don't know when doses are coming. We just found out recently that one of our partners got 300 doses and we had no idea that those were coming. And so now we're scrambling to make a plan with them to help get all of that distributed. And so it's going to be a pretty rocky process. And we will try and get as, as refined a system in place to do this as possible. But I just think it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge and I expect that challenge to last well into 21. I, well into the summer, if not longer. And so, but I will let Nick talk more about that. The last thing I have, just want to have a brief discussion with all of you. We historically, I think we've done it the last three years, have had a retreat in the first quarter of each year. I think that is one of the most beneficial things that we do. I would still like to do that if possible. I think we're probably going to have to delay it, but we'll have a new commissioner coming on. I think it'll be incredibly helpful for him. And as all of you know, it just gives us an opportunity to talk pretty candidly about things. So I'm looking for feedback from all of you. Is that something that you're, you want to do? Do you think we ought to not, given the climate right now? What are your thoughts? Cole, do you want to jump in first?
Yeah, sure, we can go down the line, but personally, I think it's been very fruitful practice in the past. And I think we get a lot out of it. It's a good chance to kind of recap what we accomplished last year operations wise from you and the rest of the staff and start thinking about the next year. I don't see why, maybe if we didn't put it back February or March, most things seem to indicate that we would all have a, an opportunity by then to get a vaccine. From a, you know, personal safety, I guess, for anybody who's concerned about that standpoint. I think that that'd be maybe a possibility. But let's go down the line. Commissioner Stottermeyer, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a valuable thing. I'm not real sure we want to go out of county. But I guess that depends on how far things are along with the vaccines and everything. But I do, especially when you have a new commissioner coming on, on top of everything else, it's very valuable to, to a commissioner. It was valuable to myself after being away for four years and then coming back has brought me up a lot on what was happening and what's going on. I bet.
Thank you, Don. Roy, what are your thoughts?
Kind of like Don, just seeing where we're at on the, on the pandemic and might, might want to delay it, but I think it is valuable to have one.
All right, Ian?
That's about it.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Dickinson and I agree, yeah, I think it's really good. It really is a good way, way to really set the framework for us as we move forward through the year. I was just thinking on how we could do it. You know, I think either where we were or in another similar setting, even in the, in the commissioners' chambers, we could definitely socially distance and maybe if we have lunch catered in, instead of going somewhere for lunch, we could still do it without too much of a delay. I hate to put it back too much further because we're kind of setting the tone for where we're going in the new year. But I, I definitely think it's something that we need to try to do.
All right. Mr. Howard, I know you won't be around, but I still don't feel right skipping you. Anything you want to say about your experience, maybe the fruitfulness of such an activity in the past?
I agree with the rest of them. I think it's very, very beneficial, gives us a chance to talk about a lot of stuff. And, and yeah, it's how you go about getting it done. That'll be on you guys' shoulders, but definitely it's worthwhile.
All right. Thank you. So all right, Derek, send that back to you again.
Yeah, thanks Cole. No, that, that's helpful. We, it takes some, you know, we, Janet and I in particular, put a lot of work into that. So before we started that process, I wanted to make sure that there was at least some desire. Yeah, I, I think we will start moving in that direction. We'll leave the date to be determined at this point. And, and yeah, some of that will depend on vaccine rollouts and when we think that, you know, you all would have the opportunity to get one and obviously we'll be in touch on that. So that is all I have this morning, Cole. So I am happy to turn it over to Nick. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Um, I have a pretty lengthy report this morning, just kind of to run through everything that's going on. We'll start out with, I got the report this morning from Advent, right now there's eight COVID patients admitted over there. So they are continuing to see a rise in patients. I do know we have three or four other COVID patients in other facilities in the metro area. Nursing facilities, we have a nursing facility call on every Tuesday. They're still struggling with COVID. At this time, every nursing facility that we have in our county has had a COVID case or currently has COVID cases going on. So a lot of them are seeing it through their staff and working real hard to keep residents safe. One of our nursing facilities is struggling really hard right now with COVID and we're working with them as much as possible. Their staffing's hurting due to it and they're using agency to, to get through. So we're working with them daily just to keep updates and find out what we can do to help them. As Derek talked, vaccines came in, we did receive 60 vaccines. Those were earmarks for healthcare providers. Last week, we administrator, administered 20 doses of that vaccine out to health department EMS individuals. And I guess like you said, that was earmarks for health department response and healthcare workers. So we are distributing 10 more doses today and have had a meeting to figure out how we're going to distribute the last 20 doses to get that out so we can hopefully get another shipment in. With that Health Partnership Clinic is a federal funded clinic that has been deemed to get quite a few doses of a vaccine. We have a conference call with them today to discuss how we can assist them in getting that distributed out to the rest of the healthcare professionals. One of our, our goals is to get it out to the doctor's offices, the home health, the dentist, everybody that does something in healthcare is, is our top priority. So we want to get those out. So as soon as we get that done, we can start focusing on our, on our individuals with the, that meet the first round for public vaccinations. As you know, we did, or you probably have seen that we, we have been accepting phone calls for people to pre-register for the vaccine. So when we do get the right amount of doses, we have an idea of who meets phase one, phase two, phase three. As of right now, we've had 779 individuals sign up to be participate in the vaccine. Some of those being healthcare professionals will, will move through that to make sure that they get their vaccine through the Health Partnership Clinic and what that's earmarked for and, and get through that. Are there, are there any questions before I move forward about the vaccines or what we're looking at doing with those doses and how we're going to do it?
Yes, Mr. Howard, I got, I got one question for you. You talk about you get out 60 doses then to start with and, and then something about possibly 100 doses with somebody else. Are these 60 doses, are you talking enough to do 60 people or are you talking enough to do 30 people? Are you keeping the dose back for the three week down the road or whatever it might be?
No, we've been, we've been assured that the, that this first round is to vaccinate 60 people. And then there's 60 more doses sitting somewhere that we will receive on the, for that follow up vaccine for that group. So it's our intention by the first of the year to have those 60 doses distributed and, and ready for the next round.
Don, how many, I know there's more than us getting the vaccine viruses in Franklin County. Do you know of any more than, than two entities or one besides ourselves? That is actually getting the vaccine delivered to them?
Right now, the three places that are getting the vaccine delivered to them are the hospital, the health department and the Health Partnership Clinic. The nursing facilities are contracted with CVS, Walgreens and one of them contracted with a local pharmacy, but is in the process of trying to get in with one of the, one of the CVS or Walgreens. I do know that those start to distribute as early as January 5th. CVS will be distributing and vaccinating people in nursing homes and that also includes their, their staff. So January 5th, we'll start seeing our nursing facility get the vaccine by CVS and Walgreens. But as far as the only three distribution points that we know about right now are going to be the Health Partnership Clinic, Advent Health, who's getting it for their employees and the health department. And as Derek said, the, the state and the, and the government are still up in the air when we're going to get these doses that we're just pretty much all hands on deck waiting for that to happen. We, we get told that it's going to happen here or there and we're just waiting for it and trying to have a plan in place. So when it gets here, we're ready to distribute.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on the vaccine or the opt-in stuff that we're doing before I move forward? All right, um, as you guys know, we have that, we have a testing agency that's paid for by the state in Pomona right now. They are, they're working with us to, or with the state to provide testing for anybody that wants to be tested. And they're opening a second drive-through, it actually started at noon yesterday at the Oshawa County Community College. I've been working with them to make sure that we are getting individuals that go through that as well as the positives. So we can make sure we're staying on top of that and working with contact tracing. Since the 18th in Pomona, they have tested a total of 176 people. They've had 11 positives. With those 11 positives, only four of them were Franklin County residents. The rest of them were people from Osage, Coffee and I believe Douglas County. They have 32 pending and they've had 133 negatives. So this is bringing in quite a few individuals from Osage County, if you look at the zip codes. I haven't gotten any feedback from what they were doing yesterday. I haven't gotten any feedback from what they were doing yesterday and, and at Neo Show. So I anticipate when I get the update at two o'clock today, I'll, I'll have an idea with how many they did or if they did any. Last week and before Christmas, the weekend before Christmas, we did 114 people through a drive-through and that worked out really well. I did get word last night late that we can continue using Mod for our testing up until the end of January with negotiations. But this could go into the middle of next of 21, which would be great. Mod it by using them have a portal that when we test individuals, they actually get their results texted or emailed to them. So that allows the distribution of results and it makes it a whole lot easier than calling all the negative. We used to have to call. It allows us to focus more on contact tracing. So that was really good news that I got last night. With that, that pretty much wraps up my health department report. I will tell you, in the dispatch center, we're expecting to retrieve eight devices from AT&amp;T that we will be using for about three months to test the statewide cat and mobile cat system. And I'm sure throughout the first part of 21, I'll be back in front of you guys to discuss what that looks like and how that's going and how that can help us into the future. So that's what I have. I know EMS has been busy with, with transfers out of the county and in the county due to the fact COVID at Christmas time, we we ended up transferring, I think, seven people out of the county and had a, a bunch of calls. So they were mostly COVID related. So we are seeing the effects and the business from COVID in the EMS department and at the hospital. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. This Commissioner Don, is, is a new, is a new protocol that suggests that everybody get tested whether they were in contact or not in contact with people that have been sick? The state of Kansas. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, the state of Kansas has an initiative. They want to test 15% of the, of the Kansas population. So that's why this is open drive-through. This is an opportunity for people who, you know, feel they may have came in contact or have symptoms, but, and want to know whether these symptoms are COVID-related symptoms or if they are positive for it. So, you know, it, it's never a bad idea to at least get tested to see if anything's going on. You know, we are around it a lot throughout the community. We know we've been in community spreads for a long time. And so it is an opportunity, but the policy, the, the new standard is if you're around somebody who is positive, that's not in your household, you know, you should quarantine. It was for 14 days with the emphasis on testing. They're stating that if you're no longer around that individual as COVID positive, you can test five days from contact. If your test, which is a P, needs to be a PCR test is negative, on day seven, you can be released instead of the 14. If you choose to not test, then you have to be quarantined for 10 days. Household contacts, instead of doing 14 days after the individual in the house is positive, you can test on day five and be released on day seven. So it pretty much cuts the quarantine of a household contact in half. So you don't have people that are out for up to 28 days. So those are the new changes and, and the option for getting tested is very readily available around this area now due to the drive-through testing in Pomona, Pomona and Neo Show and the health department offering scheduled testing Monday through Friday. So I hope that helps.
Next, it's Don.
Yes.
How on the testing at Pomona and Neo Show, do they have to make an appointment?
There is an appointment. I believe it's testkansas.com and then you gotta choose and you can set up an appointment on there and, and show up and they will test you. So there's an appointment process for that and it's, it's on test. I can't remember the exact website for it, but I believe we posted it on our website.
This is Commissioner Dickinson.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Don. No, you're finishing up. You're, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna, hey, uh, when, okay. When the other entities are giving the vaccines, do they have to register that with the health department? Who they give it to and when they give it?
Have to register it through the state. Everybody that now that's getting vaccines have to, have to report to the state who they've given those vaccines to. That's one of the difficult parts about the vaccine is you can't, and in the early stages especially, you can't go to, let's say, the health department and we can't give a vaccine to one of my EMS individuals and then them go to the hospital for their second one. It's a situation where you have to stay where you've gotten that. So the nurses, healthcare people at the hospital have to get their second dose from the hospital. The individuals we have vaccinated will have to come back to the health department and we're using our track, our systems in the health department to track those. But when we get going through the partnership clinic, that's what the conversation is about today is if the individual vaccinated in Franklin County will be traced for their second dosages and reminders through the health department. And if we will be a large player in helping them or if they're going to be able to do this on their own and how we're going to be able to assist with it. So a lot of those questions for the Health Partnership will be answered today around 10:30. So.
Commissioner Dickinson, I was just going to make a comment that I know some people that got the test through the drive-through clinic done before Christmas because they were traveling and they wanted to make sure that they were negative before they made those plans. But they got their results back within a day or two. So are they, what kind of test are they doing?
They are doing the PCR test also and sending it off. I'm glad to hear that they're speeding up. I know the first couple of days they did it. It took up to almost four days for them to get results back. We're right now with mod that we're using. We're getting them back in normally less than 24 hours. So we've been working with them very closely to, uh, to see how they're doing and make sure that they're meeting some standards that we, uh, we want. And it sounds to me like there is some good turnarounds showing up. And while I'm, I'm talking, the website to sign up for that is gogetested.com backslash Kansas. So that's where individuals, if they need to get tested or want to get tested, they can do that or they can call the health department and we will schedule and test them through our system too. So I believe now Franklin County residents will have three options to get tested.
Commissioner Dickinson, one more time, is the first dose and the second dose the same thing?
Yes, my understanding is the same stuff. It's just, uh, get your first dose and your second dose and then we will learn what kind of titers we will need, you know, as we go through this.
All right. Well, thank you, Nick. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Sheriff Richards, are you still on?
Yes, sir, I am. I have not been around here for a little bit, based on a vacation and out of state for training for a little while. So just a quick update, we, uh, we have been pretty busy. It was obviously a very unique year for everyone. And, uh, but looking back over the year, I'm sitting down with staff, we've gone over what our strategic plan was for the year and we've met just most of our, most of our objectives for the year. And, uh, and some we've, we've exceeded. So that, even though it was, it's kind of a year in upheaval, we've, uh, we've, we've still been able to make some good progress out of it. And I'm very proud of my staff for, uh, for the work that they've done there. Especially our sergeants and lieutenants that have kind of taken, taken the initiative and taken some of these projects and, and owned them and, and proceeded with them. So, uh, so kudos to, to staff and, and all that they've done there. And as you are all aware, several of our people were involved in an act of kindness for a person here in our, in our county. And that ended up on the world news and we're still receiving emails and some phone calls and, and letters in reference to that. And so again, I just add some to those guys. I'll miss some names here, but I know that Sergeant, Sergeant Vega and Deputy Macklin were, the two of them that were instrumental in that. I know that Deputy Rivers and his, his wife are, had been very instrumental in collecting those donations and making sure that we're getting them to that family as well. And so I, I, it's, the world is just kind of seeing what it is that we've known all along about our people. And that's that they got into this with a servant's heart to, to help people. And so this was just a display of that. And I'm glad that people got to see, see what our people are all about. And so again, we're, we're proud of them and, and we'll do, we'll be continuing on with that. I know you guys had talked a little bit earlier about having your retreat. We plan to do a similar thing with our command staff as well. That helps us to, uh, to get our game plan going for our, uh, for a comprehensive plan for the year. And then we will be meeting with our community advisory board for their input and feedback as well. And we're going to be, we've added a, a member and looking to add one more member to that board. And I just need to sit down with that other community member as well. So we're, we're pleased with the, with the feedback that we, that we get. And we're glad that the public is comfortable enough to, to give us that feedback and let us know where we are and what they want us to be doing. So it's really about all I have to report this morning. If any of you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Well, we appreciate the update. Thank you, Sheriff. David Lee.
Good morning again. With the holidays, not a whole lot of working days between our last meeting and now our biggest focus has really been preparing for the, the winter weather events. We had one yesterday and we started preparing for that on Monday. And crews yesterday spread material on all of our paved roads across the county. Today, we're replenishing our sand stockpile in anticipation of the next event tomorrow night and into Friday. So they'll be getting the trucks ready, making sure they're ready to go for that next event. And we'll, we'll decide tomorrow whether or not we need to, when we need to start sending our, our trucks out, whether that'll be Thursday evening or into Friday morning sometime. So we'll make that call once the weather gets a little closer to us. So really that's, uh, that's what the, the, most of our focus has been. We were able to install an entrance and, and do a little brushwork in the meantime there. So that's all I have for today.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. David, I understand that it, I believe that Peg Pearson's last day is tomorrow. I want you to know that the last time I saw her, I did try to talk her out of it. And that, uh, that was unsuccessful. So we do just wish her well in her retirement. We're going to miss her. She's been a good, a good leader in her position.
Yes, ma'am. I, I would echo all of that. I've been trying for two years to get her to stay longer. I, I think that I accomplished getting her to stay about a week longer than she originally planned to. So I, you know, we'll take every day that we can. Peg Pearson has really done an outstanding job leading that, uh, that group and really setting the standard for how that operation needs to continue forward. And I've, I've told her several times that I appreciate her leaving a solid roadmap for Pat Campbell and I to follow in her footsteps. So she will be missed. But her, uh, oh, her influence on the department will be felt for years to come for sure.
That's Commissioner Don. David, could you give me a call after the meeting?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, David, for your update. Janet, do you have anything for us?
So just an update on our partnership with Whit O'Brien, our consultant for the CARES Act funding. We have our conference call today with them where Alicia, our consultant, and I are trying to wrap up our reporting for the last time for the end of December. So all purchases made by December 30th, which as you recall, was slated to be the, the final chance to spend funds out of the CARES Act funds. But we have received word from the state and our consultants that that has been extended slightly. So we are still waiting for some updates on how all that's going to change. But we had instructed all of our sub recipients, our school districts, our cities, that we wanted to get all the funds extended by the 30th with little to no information on when, when and how the timelines would be extended. So we're going to be visiting today about where all of our other partners, school districts and cities came in and anything that they have left to spend. So we can finish allocating all of that money and make sure that all of those get spent in our county so that we don't have to send any back to the state. But the early reports that I've got from the state say that we will have until, likely until early March to spend the rest of the money. So we do have some things that are still waiting to be spent, like our audit funds. And we do have some salaries for the health department that have not been paid out yet because they're in that timeframe from the last payroll in December until the end of the year. So I'm working really closely with HR on those to make sure that we get all of those reported in the CARES Act funding so that we're not spending funds that we hadn't budgeted for, for our health nurses and things like that, that are working additional hours. So just working really hard on getting that all wrapped up for the year.
That's a lot of work and we appreciate you. Any questions for Janet? All right then. Well, thank you, Janet. We'll move on to commissioners' comments and board reports. Commissioner Howard.
I don't have anything to report. Derek, could you give me a call when this meeting's over? I got something I want to run past you.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick. Commissioner Don.
Yes, uh, didn't have any meeting or anything like that, but I really appreciate the Sheriff's Foundation. Those folks really helped out. That lady in need, that was a, a great story and it's great for Franklin County. Really appreciate that. Ending to that situation. That's, that's really great for us. And I just want to help. I just want to wish everybody a happy new year and be safe on New Year's Day.
Well, thank you, Roy. Mr. Stottlemyre.
No, I don't have anything today.
All righty. Commissioner Dickinson.
I didn't have anything this week, but I am looking forward to next week that we're finally being able to give out our employee recognition. We've had to reschedule them. So we are looking to do that next, next week. And as we, and just kind of to, to build on what Derek was saying about, at the beginning of this pandemic, we really did not know how we, this was going to turn out for the county as far as our finances. So to get to the end of the year and be in such good financial shape is just. So to get to the end of the year and, um, be in such good financial shape is just, uh, it, I mean, it, it, it's good, great to be moving into the new year. Um, it's great to be moving into the new year period. Uh, I think all of us are ready to get done with this year, but, uh, to be in such a good financial shape as we move, uh, forward is, is kudos to all of us, all, all of our staff and, and all of those who are making the decisions. And that's it.
All right, well, thank you. I don't have anything I need to, to report. Uh, Derek, anything before, uh, we look to adjourn? No, sir. All right then, you can get a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion, it's Don.
Thank you, Don. About that second.
Roy, second.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.